With communication. Oh, I'm sorry, public forum. There we go. Does anyone want to speak? I don't know. Okay. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, state your formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items you wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within two-minute time, within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We do have a few people that signed up. Mr. Pimmarini.
Hello. I'm Mark Pimmarini, Assistant Director of Public Works. Just here to comment on C-48 Communication, the sidewalk appropriation. I'm just here to talk about that because we have a base bid for that. The contract was awarded last week. We have a base bid that has grant-funded for it, and that needs to be done by June 30th. The second half, the alternates are typical. We get $250,000 usually every year for the sidewalk expense account. I'm just asking that the council vote for that tonight because I can't sign the contract and include the alternates without that money.
And what would the impact be if we didn't?
I'd have to go straight with the base bid because he has to get, I have to get the work done for these grants before June 30th.
Okay, so do we lose money as a city? We spend more?
Yeah, because you're getting a good rate to the amount of sidewalks we're doing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Mr. Ramos. Some people may have signed up thinking it was the hearing piece. I can't make the next one here. Another one on Mechanic Street. Judy? Judy Daniels. Peter Latchis is gone. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. We now move to communications from the mayor. We're back in session. Communication 45, Madam Clerk.
C-45 relative to the appropriation of $1,176,706 to the Water Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-45 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 45. C-46.
C-46 relative to the appropriation of $100,000 to the Sewer Department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-46 again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Same situation. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 46 has been given regular course. We'll now move to Communication 47.
47 relative to the appropriation of $815,656 to the Sewer Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 47 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Once again, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to skip C-48 for a moment and go to Communication 49.
C-49 relative to the appropriation of $1,048,157 to the school transportation expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-49 again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 49 has been given regular course. C-50.
C-50 relative to the appropriation of $130,000 to the debt service principal expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 50 again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 50, regular course. Communication 51, Madam Clerk.
C-51 relative to the appropriation of $5 million to the stabilization fund, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 51, excuse me, 50, what do we have? Excuse me, I'm sorry. 51. 51. Excuse me. Communication 51 again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 51. C-52.
Are we going to go back to?
No, not yet.
Okay. And C-52, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests authorization to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain parcel of land located at Leggett Hill Road, Central Street, and described in a deed recorded with the Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds in Book 3977, Page 14, for general municipal purposes on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems appropriate, and as funding therefore raised in appropriate transfer from available funds in or borrow the sum of $350,000 for the purpose of said acquisition and cost-related, related or incidental thereto and further to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing acquisition.
Communication 52 is referred to the Chairman of City Property, Councilor Ottinger.
Regular course. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like to refer that out to anyone at this point, or?
Um, I don't know. Suggestions? Sorry.
No, I want to help him on, please do. Go ahead.
We generally refer it out to the Building Department, Planning Department, Zoning.
Okay.
Assessor might be appropriate, too.
Which one?
Assessor.
We're working with the city solicitor at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Call me if I have a question.
All right. So right so far, we have on Communication 52, regular course with referral to the Building Department, Planning Department, ZBA, Assessor's Office, and City Solicitor. Would anyone like to add anyone on to that?
Treasurer's Office.
Treasurer's Office. If that's agreeable, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is, Ms. President.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other add-ons? Okay, we're good. So regular course on Communication 52 with referral to the Building Inspector, Planning Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Assessors, the City Solicitor, and the Treasurer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 53, Madam Clerk.
C-53, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the property known to the assessors is map 302 block 1A and located on Jungle Road be declared surplus.
Declared surplus. Communication 53 is referred to the Chairman of City Property.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to regular course with referrals to the Assessor's Office, the Planning Board, and the Building Inspector. Would that be appropriate?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay.
If I may, Mr. President.
Counselor Cormier.
Is the, do we know, is this just the old dump? Is that that site?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to have that specifically identified. I'm sure that will come out during process.
I haven't had a chance to look at the map.
Right.
I do know that there's a table petition on a parcel of land on Jungle Road already.
Okay.
It's been tabled since 2009, so we might want to look into that and see if he wants us to readdress that or take it off the table for action or whatever.
Right. A nice task for City Property.
Thank you.
Information to find as well. Okay? All right. Anything else on that? Good. Okay, regular course has been awarded to C-53 with referrals to the Assessor's Office, Planning Board, and the Building Inspector. I'm now going to go back up to Communication 48. It has been requested, due to the nature of the appropriation, that this is changed from regular course to an emergency preamble. To become an emergency preamble, the first task will be to vote on the preamble by two-thirds vote, and then I'll refer the petition to the chairman if it passes the test on that, other than adequate regular course with an, and I just want to caution us, it would be necessary to have a special meeting Thursday night if that does not pass the test tonight. So therefore, I'm going to ask for a vote for emergency preamble. Go ahead. Okay.
Dear members of the City Council, with regards to Communication C-48 relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the sidewalk expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, I respectfully request that C-48 be considered to have an emergency preamble as required in the provision of Section 3-9B of the City of Leominster Charter. Please see attached correspondence from Ray Racine, Director of Public Works, for further information on this request.
So the first vote taken again will be emergency preamble. Are there any questions on that process? If not, all those in favor of the emergency preamble, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to one, the preamble has passed. I refer Communication 48 to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. You heard earlier from Mark Pimmarini. I also have a, of the DPW as well as a letter. I do have a letter from the DPW director that I'll read into the record. Dear council members, in regards to item C-48, the City Council Agenda for April 23rd, we respectfully request this item be voted on as an emergency appropriation. Item C-48 is an appropriation of $250,000 to the sidewalk expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. The sidewalk and granite curbing 2018 contract has been awarded. This contract has base bid projects that are funded by grants, which are contingent upon being finished by June 30, 2018. The alternates are sidewalks that will be installed using sidewalk expense account. Unfortunately, we can't sign the bid award approval letter for both the base bid and the alternates without all the funding available for the contract. The contract was bid in this format to take advantage of great pricing received relative to the amount of the sidewalk bid. Therefore, we are requesting that the vote for the appropriation take place today. Thank you for your attention to this matter sincerely yours, Raymond Racine, Director of Public Works. So historically, at least for the last number of years, the city has appropriated $250,000, which has supplemented the monies that the city has received as by way of grants. This year, I believe the grant money is, is just shy of about a half a million dollars. So when they went out to bid, they bid the grant money, and they bid an additional $250,000 as an alternate. Because they combined the bidding, they got an advantageous price, which I believe is, is nearly someplace around 20% less than they got last year. So it's financially advantageous for the city to do its own funded sidewalk work along with the grant-funded sidewalk work as a package. And as you know, the DPW can't sign the contract unless the money's available firsthand. So that's what, and they don't want to hold up the base bid, which is the grant-funded part of the contract, because it has a time limitation. So therefore, in order to take advantage of the price, we need to act on this this evening. Therefore, the emergency preamble, and it would be my recommendation to move forward with this on a, in grant C-48, and Mr. President, I'd ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the Clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I am in agreement.
There are a member, Councilor David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, the recommendation from Finance is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 48. This will take a two-thirds vote in order to pass. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counselor Feckley.
Just a point of order, Mr. President. I know that informally, I for one have been informed how much we have in the excess and deficiency account, but it hasn't been formally brought before the council, so I don't know how we could vote on spending money that we don't know how much we have. I'm sure we have enough based on informal numbers, unofficial numbers that I have, but...
It's the, there's been a report that's been submitted to the council by the comptroller, which I'll, I'll read as part of the financial record later.
Okay, right. But we hadn't, I just, I just wanted to make a point of that, that we had not been notified how much the excess and deficiency was.
Well, the, Mr. Chairman has the report.
Okay.
The problem is, we are taking this out of context.
Right.
If we were taking this under Finance, he would have read the report before we even got to this point.
Right. I understand all that for the public. I just wanted them to know that, you know, we kind of know what we're doing here, but you know, just that.
Yeah, we do.
Mostly.
I do.
Mostly.
The comptroller has to sign.
That's my job.
The comptroller has to sign the contract as well, sort of buying the availability of the funds.
Okay, thank you.
You know what you're doing now?
I knew what I was doing all along.
I know you did. Okay, good. Okay. Great question. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor regarding Communication 48? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor?
Yay.
I'm sorry, John.
Dobrowski.
Counselor Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
So the college Johnny. Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Ottinger.
Pauline Cormier.
Pauline Cormier. Okay.
I had one of those days at work.
They got married.
I go, this one is coffee. You and coffee. I get a break of coffee.
That would be a yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record, if anybody, vote of nine to nothing, the communication has passed. Does the chairman have an order?
I think so.
I think so.
Ordered that the sum of $250,000 be appropriated to the sidewalk expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, we begin, this will be a yea and nay vote. All those in favor, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed? Good, we're good. That's good. We'll move on. Okay, we now move on to petitions, first time on the calendar. Let's bring up 1418.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's bring it up.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor, you ready for that?
Oh, yeah.
That's yours? Yeah, I mean to report if it's okay, if you don't mind. Okay, good. So we had the hearing earlier this evening.
So Petition 1418, John P. Bolger and Dorothy Rulo and 10 registered voters, rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street West Side, map 481, lots 19 and 20. Map 521, lot 1 and 39. Map 488, lots 1, 5, 6, 7, 8. Map 394, lots 18, 3A, 31A, 32A, 32B, and 32C. Pleasant Street East Side, map 561, lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map 340, lots 1 and 2. Map 410, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22, and 23. Map 496, lots 1, 2, and 3, and Low Street, map 488, lot 5. We had a public hearing, continuation of a public hearing today. We've heard from the residents. I do, I do feel compelled to respond to one of the residents that implied that perhaps I, I held things up because I might have a conflict. If I had a conflict, I'd recuse myself, and trust me, I'd love to recuse myself from this. But I've been doing this for a long time, and any time I have a conflict, I declare it. And there were a lot of reasons for delays. One of the main reasons for the delays was getting the petition in order and amending it to be in proper format, which I personally helped the petitioners do.
Did I sign up for a lecture?
Maybe you did.
I don't think so.
No.
I made a comment.
Okay, let's just keep it here.
We can talk later.
Absolutely.
John, go ahead.
So I'll go to Counselor Bonanza. I think we know where you stand. I don't know if you want to make a position statement.
Yeah, I, I've made a long, I made a long presentation a couple of meetings ago. I'm not, I mean, I get where the petitioners are coming from, and we all know that that project up there is, is a terrible set of circumstances, and the neighborhood has suffered and will continue to suffer with it. And that's unfortunate, and quite honestly, that slipped through the cracks, and that should have never occurred, but everything that happened there was built by right. And there was no, there was no site plan approval, there was no zoning relief required, and, and now we're stuck with a horrible thing. I do understand that there are some, some conflicting issues here, and there are, I think, a number, the breadth of the petition is pretty significant. There's a lot of properties included in it. There's a lot of, you know, non-conforming uses created thereby, but I've got to weigh it all. And as I said the first time I spoke on this, it, to me, where I come down on it, it's easily determined that we're better to pass it than not, and, and give the, give the neighborhood the protection that it deserves so they don't have another situation that could created like the one that they're already, that they have to deal with now. So I'm at favor of passing the petition.
Changing zoning is a serious issue. Zoning was put in place for a reason, usually to protect. And I do, although it may not be agreed upon, the people that came to the podium that own multifamily homes have owned those homes with the correct zoning in place. They legally own that property, and now this is going to change their situation. I get it. I don't think they should be slighted because of that. I think our obligation is to listen to everybody, and then make the best decision all the way I am going to support this because I did a number of years ago. It's been brought to us, this is what, the third time? And I've supported it before, and I'll support it again, but I don't want to minimize the impact, and I'm very concerned that people still don't totally get it because the minute somebody sells a property and goes to put a deck or a porch, and all of a sudden, there's a dimensional change in their lot size, they're going to start asking why this is the problem, why this is the issue. So that's got to really be very clear, but I will support the petition.
Mr. Chairman? You have a report.
We have a, we have a report. So the recommendation from Legal Affairs is to grant Petition 1418.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council has served their recommendation read to grant 1418. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Frida.
Yeah, I just asked the chairman what your recommendation is.
I'm going to support it because it's a scaled-down version from what was originally And I do think that particular area of Pleasant Street is vulnerable to future development. So, so I will support it. I think what was originally petitioned to us would have really created a lot of havoc. But I, I think that there are issues that, you know, these, these neighbors and residents, you know, need to be aware of, which is why I, you know, had the city solicitor write that letter, and then I submitted, I appended to that letter what I think is a pretty easy-to-read chapter that summarizes a very complicated law. So I would just encourage everybody to get a copy of that so they know where they stand. But I, I think the petitioners worked hard, and they, they listened to their, their neighbors, and they took a lot of concerns into, into consideration. But if somebody didn't support it, I would completely understand why, but that's my position.
Thank you. Counselor Frida, you still have the floor if you'd like it?
No, it does.
All set?
I just wanted to show you're unanimous.
Thank you. It is unanimous, three to nothing coming out of committee. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Feckley.
I just want to mention that, you know, we've been talking about this for many, many weeks, and this has probably been one of the most difficult decisions for me to make. I went back and forth and back and forth looking at things. I did go up to the neighborhood. It was a few months ago around Christmas time because I remember so many beautiful Christmas lights. It was the night when there was a super moon. I went up on the hill, and, and my husband and I, you know, really could, could get the feeling for that neighborhood. We drove down Low Street, and I know that there's a beautiful home that has setback. There's a lot of land around, and then right up at the top of the hill is that development. So I was afraid of a slippery slope, that this would cause other, you know, constituents to come and say, hey, what about me? When I sit on my, my couch on Eastern Avenue in North Leominster, I look out, I see Heritage Gardens. So, I mean, I have that in my backyard as well. However, after hearing everything and getting this letter, okay, which I think is something that all of you should really read and the appendage that Counselor Dobrowski has, has put on it, there's a lot of cautionary words here that I think everybody really needs to take into consideration and take responsibility for if things don't go right. But because of the fact that that neighborhood is historic, because of the fact that it's the, you know, the entranceway to Showen Farms, I think that it's unique in Leominster. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Feckley. Counselor Schellof-Zephyr.
Thank you very much. I just want to commend both the proponents. I know that you've worked very, very hard on this. I know you've made accommodations based on feedback from some of the counselors here. And I also want to commend people who are opposed, their, you know, they did their due diligence. I certainly understand, you know, where those folks are coming from as well. And it was a long process, but we really had to be very methodical and very careful and very thoughtful about getting all of the information and listening to both, you know, both sides of the, of the story here. I am happy to support it. I feel good about supporting it based on the letter from Brian Riley. And to Counselor Feckley's point, there are some cautionary words in there. You know, people that will have non-conforming uses can make changes to their property down the road, but they will have to go through a process, and that will be an opportunity for all of you guys to support them at the Zoning Board of Appeals or support them at the Planning Board. So again, you've worked really well together in the neighborhood, and going forward, you know, again, it's an opportunity to continue that great work, but I'm happy to support it. I love that neighborhood. So, great work. I know you put a lot of hours and a lot of time, a lot of meetings, but, you know, hopefully we'll get it fixed for you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor Cormier.
Yeah. You know, I think it's kind of difficult to take something that already conforms and, well, most parcels there that already conform and make them, you know, non-conforming, it kind of doesn't make any sense, but, you know, I think, you know, we all run into situations in life that are, are unique. I mean, that's just, that's the way it is. Nothing is black and white. And, you know, I, I think we've had a lot of, a lot of dialogue and debate, legal opinions, explanations, and I think it's very clear as to, you know, what the process is and, you know, what the consequences are of rezoning this. All of that information is now on public file, public record, you know, forever. So anybody that wants to buy a property that it might be involved in this in the future, you know, just like any other property you'd buy, you need to do your due diligence. Any of the neighbors, any of the existing residents now should know, you know, the situation there. But I am going to support this because I do think it's unique, and, and there is the potential that you could have a, another situation in that, in that neighborhood again, and I don't think, I don't think any of us want to see that. So I am going to, I am going to support this petition this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Cormier.
Just quickly, I just wanted to commend Counselor Dobrowski. I think he went the unpopular route on the last date that we were here to make sure that everyone had the information that they need, that the record was solid, that the letters were solid. You know, it was, it was easy to go up and look at the property and see the petitioners here and have an emotional response. When you see it, nobody likes it, it's terrible. It's easy to have that emotional response. I think Counselor Dobrowski took that back, made us stop, slow it down, take a good, solid look at it so everybody is on a level playing field, everybody knows what we're going into it. So I will support it as well, and that's because of the work of Counselor Dobrowski.
Well said, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Ottinger?
It did maybe somewhat, somewhat redundant, but I just want to think that everybody, the council as a whole, has really put a lot of effort into this, to this petition, listening to everybody. And, you know, while it's difficult to make the decision, I lived in that neighborhood for 26 years. I lived on Apple Tree Lane up in Offalo Street, and I understand that coming down that hill with this new development there, it's going to be horrible in the wintertime. You know, people are going to be slamming into cars and stuff like that, but it's there, we have to live with it, and let's just hope we can prevent it in the future, and I will be supporting this petition.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Feckley?
Just real quick.
Sure.
I did want to do a shout out to Nona Ojala. This has been sitting in front of me ever since we started off, so I hope that the TV camera is getting that. The Elias Carter Home, where the home industry started, so this is, you know, this is hard to do more. So thank her for us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote. We need six votes for it to pass. Beginning with Counsel Freed.
Yay.
Counsel Dabrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Legislation has passed. Congratulations.
I thank all of you.
Yes, we thank all of you. You have made me humble and I'm just so grateful and respectful of all of your hard work. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So you're not allowed to address the council now, but thank you. Kind of let that go a little. Good John, good as John. Now go watch the hockey game.
I'm losing.
Okay, we're now back on page three. Petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with 60-18.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Sure.
Can we move the reappointments up? We have Ms. Sumner here. She's been waiting patiently.
So we're on page six. We have the Reappointment Recreation Director Judith Sumner, term to expire 4/15/2021. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Recreation Director Judith Sumner, term to expire April 15th, 2021. I think we'd all agree that the City of Leamester is likely to have Ms. Sumner in her, in her position as Recreation Director and as the Chairwoman of Ways and Means would definitely recommend that we grant her reappointment.
Okay, I yield the floor to the second member, Counsel Freed.
Yeah, I agree.
Third member, Counsel Dabrowski.
I agree.
Please restate the recommendation.
We have a unanimous recommendation to grant the reappointment of Recreation Director Judith, Judith Sumner, term to expire April 15th, 2021.
Counsel has heard the recommendation for confirmation of Judith Sumner. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
I'm just going to say it's about time.
About time, can you continue to say what?
No, no, it's just about time that we have the reappointment.
On her?
On her.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we're happy to have it. I'm happy to have it. Excuse me, I won't speak for the people.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote for confirmation, beginning with Counsel Freed.
Yay.
Counsel Dabrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jenny.
Congratulations. Okay, 6018. Madam Clerk.
6018, Mark Gordon, renewed the second-hand dealer's license for Music Mania Incorporated, located, located at 875 Mary Mav.
60-18 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course with referral to the Treasurer and the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 60-18 has been given regular course with referral to the Treasurer and Police Department. Thank you. 61-18.
61-18, Matthew Sayjack. Renewed the second-hand dealer's license for Gold Buyers of America, located at 100 Commercial Road.
61-18 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, we will have regular course with referral to the Treasurer and the Police Department.
61-18 has been given regular course with referral to the Treasurer and Police Department. Thank you, Madam Chair. 62-18.
62-18, Max C. Badanza Esquire, amend section 1377 of the Leamester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southwest-bound traffic on Commonwealth Circle at the intersection of Exchange Street.
62-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Agent of the Leamester Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 62-18 has been given regular course with referral to the Traffic Bureau. Can I yield the floor to Counsel Bonanza first?
Sure. I'd ask the chairman to consider referring it also to Copeland and Page. You may recall it was a December opinion issued by Brian Riley on a topic relative to the same circumstances. Stop signs at the intersection of a public way in an unaccepted way.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
No problem, thank you. Counsel Freed, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, DPW as well.
DPW as well? Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
All right, thank you. So 62-18 has been given regular course with referral to the Traffic, City Solicitor, and the DPW. Thank you. 63-18, Madam Clerk.
63-18, Max C. Badanza Esquire, amend sections 1377 of the Leamester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northeast-bound traffic on Revolution Drive at the intersection of Exchange Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 63-18 again is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Agent of the Police Department, Copeland and Page, and the DPW.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 63-18 has been given regular course with referral to the Traffic Bureau, City Solicitor, and the DPW. Thank you. We'll now move on to reappointments. Madam Clerk.
Reappointments, Board of Assessors, William Connor, term to expire 4/15/2021.
And that appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course. Do we need an interview or you're all set?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. We'll now do matters before the City Council, beginning with Ways and Means of Veterans Affairs. 55-18, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. If there are no objections, we can do 55-18 through including 50-18 in block.
You said 58-18?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Are there any objections? Okay, thank you.
Okay. 55-18, Best Buy Stores LP, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Best Buy Stores LP number 1433, located at 33 Orchard Hill Park Drive. 56-18, GameStop Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for GameStop number 3594, located at 26 Orchard Hill Park Drive. 57-18, GameStop Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for GameStop number 1485, located at 100 Commercial Road. 58-18, Christopher Reevard, grant a transient vendor's license for the sale of flowers. So at the last meeting, they went out for referrals to the Police Department and the Treasury and Collector. The Police Department indicates that they have no good cause to oppose the renewal of the second-hand dealer's licenses or the transient vendor license of Mr. Reevard. And the Treasury and Collector indicates that they have no objection to the petitions listed below. And they list all four petitions. So with that information, my recommendation would be to grant the second-hand dealer's license for 55-18 through including 57-18 and the transient vendor's license for 58-18. And you could poll my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We'll now yield the floor to Counsel Freed, the clerk.
I agree.
And the third member, Counsel Dabrowski.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please restate.
Yes, we have a unanimous recommendation to grant the second-hand dealer's license, 15-18 through including 57-18, and the transient vendor's license for 58-18.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel has heard the recommendation right to grant 55-18 through 58-18 in block. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, they have been granted in block. We'll now move on to Legal Affairs. Down to the bottom of page four, 33-18, is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 33-18, Dean J. Mazzarella, changed the zoning of eight lots of land from the Residence B zoning district to the commercial zoning district located along the north side of Mechanic Street and the south side of the unimproved portion of Glendale Street and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent portion of Glendale Street. All is shown on a plan entitled, "Plan to Accompany Petition for Zoning Change, Leamester, Mass, Prepared for Dean J. Mazzarella, dated January 10th, 2018 by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, LLC." We had a hearing this evening, Mr. President. It's necessitated to continue the hearing to get the Planning Board recommendation. The hearing's been continued to May 14th, 2018 at 6:30. Therefore, the recommendation is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read for further time on 33-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. 33-18 has been given further time with a hearing continued on May 14th, 2018 at 6:50 p.m. in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that's 6:30. 6:30 p.m.
What do they say?
6:50.
I'm sorry, 6:30.
Yeah, I'm big to them.
Okay, 6:30, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to page five. Again, under Legal Affairs, we have 39-18. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Mr. President, I have a conflict with 39-18.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that. I yield the floor to Counsel Freed.
Thank you, Mr. President. 39-18, Crime Wellness Centers, ran a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lock Drive. Recommendation will be for further time. We had a, a hearing is scheduled for May 14th at 6:45.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel has heard the recommendation read with a continued hearing on 39-18 and further time this evening. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you, eight to nothing. All right, we'll now move on to 40-18. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 40-18, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director. Amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leamester Zoning Ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. We have a hearing scheduled for May 14th at 6:15 p.m. Recommendation is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation for further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded on 40-18 with the continuation of the hearing for May 14th at 6:15 p.m. in the council chambers. 41-18, is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 41-18, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director. Amend Article 11, Section 22-60 of the Leamester Zoning Ordinance to add language requiring deep observation hole testing for stormwater infiltration, detention areas. At the request of the Planning Director to continue this, the hearing was continued to May 29th, 2018 at 6:30. So accordingly, the recommendation is further time as well.
Further time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel has heard the recommendation read for further time on 41-18. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to 41-18 with the continuation of the hearing to May 29th at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, great job tonight.
Thank you.
Excellent job. We'll now move on to the City Financial Report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the year, fiscal year, on July 1, 2017 with a balance in the stabilization account of $14,517,855. During the course of the year, we've appropriated from stabilization a total of $4,611,690, leaving a balance in stabilization of $9,906,165. Since our last meeting, free cash was certified and the beginning balance in the free cash account as a result of that certification is $9,732,293. We had a number of matters that we gave regular course to earlier this evening, as well as one that we passed as an emergency preamble, namely, C-48. The total of all of those appropriations are $8,520,519. If all of the appropriations are passed, that'll leave a balance in the excess deficiency account of $1,211,774. I created a summary of this late last week and I have supplied each council with a summary of what I just read.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the financial report? If not, Mr. Chairman, we now have Communication 44 before us. Do you have a report?
I do, Mr. President. C-44 relative to the appropriation of $80,000 to the Police Department. Overtime account seemed to be transferred from the Police Department's salary in wages account. This is another intra-department transfer, just shuffling their budget. As you are aware, they're down in terms of overall staff as a result of having fewer appointed police officers in the full complement, as a result of injuries on duty, as a result of promotions that haven't occurred yet, et cetera. So there is a surplus of funds in the salary wages account and a deficit of funds in the department overtime account, so we're simply, the police chief is simply asking to transfer money from one account to the other. It'd be my position to grant C-44. Mr. President, I'd ask you to check with my committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to Counsel Pauline Cormier, the clerk.
I'm in agreement.
Third member, Counsel David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a unanimous recommendation from, from Finance to grant C-44.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 44. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 44 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I ordered that the sum of $80,000 be appropriated to the Police Department overtime account, seemed to be transferred from the Police Department's salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order's been adopted. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your work in your committee. We'll now move on to reappointments. We have a block of them. I yield the floor to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take these in block except for the reappointments to the Planning Board, which I would like to take separately because I have some comments about that.
Okay, so...
And obviously, we've already done the Recreation Director.
So the Planning Board will be extracted from the block as well as Judith Sumner, who's already been confirmed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Can you read the names, please? First, excuse me. Counsel Bonanza?
Would you extract the Library Board of Trustees because I don't want to vote on my own appointment?
Right, that makes sense. We'll have to have a separate vote for that.
Fine. Okay. All right, reappointments. Board of Appeals, Stephen A. DeCarolis, term to expire 4/15/2021. Board of Appeals, Alternative Member, Lee Baron, term to expire 4/15/2019. Board of Health, Dr. Peter Lanza, term to expire 4/15/2021. Conservation Commission, Paul Colombo, term to expire, I think that's probably, let's see, in the letter, it says 2021 as well. Just noticed that. But I believe it's 4/15.
Paul Colombo.
4/15, so, yeah, his term expired 4/15/18, so we'll, we'll assume it's 4/15/2021. Council on Aging, Adriana Fotakis and Betty David, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Cultural Commission, Eileen O'Leary, term to expire 4/15/2021. Disability Commission, Gail Turbide and Marty Turbide, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Historical Commission, Donald Permarino, Michael Kerrigan, Chester Carter, and Patrick LaPointe, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Housing Authority, Sylvia Lamb, term to expire 4/15/2023. License Commission, James J. Kelly Jr., term to expire 4/15/2024. Recreation Commission, John Chicalini, Thomas Vissonette, and Richard Green, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Director of Veteran Services, Richard Vautour, term to expire 4/15/2021. Mr. President, this was a regular course last time and I have not heard any reason not to grant the reappointments of these fine people who do very good work for the City of Leamester. city of Lemmister. Many, or most of them that I have either interviewed have been to the meetings that they have attended, and I'm sure that if there is one or two that I'm not very familiar with, I'm sure that some of my colleagues on the council are. So my recommendation would be to grant the reappointments that I have just read, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Freedom?
I agree.
Councilor Dobrowski?
I agree.
Madam Chair, please restate.
We have a unanimous recommendation to reappoint...
You don't have to read it again just once.
No, I know, the board of commission members that I have just read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilors, that list read in block. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Councilor Freedom?
I just want to say that I'm very happy that Rick Vautour is getting reappointed. I know for a fact he works on the state level, very involved in services, in veteran services throughout the state, and I think at times it's been a little embarrassing that he didn't have a confirmation of his service, so very happy to see that he's going to be confirmed through twenty, twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not, let's do a roll call vote in the block, beginning with Councilor Freedom.
Yea.
Excuse me, Councilor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Feckley?
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yes.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
I should record a yea in block by a vote of nine to nothing. Confirmation has taken place. I now yield the floor to the chairwoman for the library board of trustees, Councilor Bonanza, who will not be voting on his reappointment. Do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Library Board of Trustees, Mark Bonanza and Lawrence El Nefor, terms to expire April fifteenth, fifteenth, twenty, twenty-one. Again, these names, reappointments were given regular course at the last meeting, and I have heard of no reason not to have these granted. Of course, we all know the great work that Councilor Bonanza does on the library board of trustees, and we've had Mr. Nefor before us many times, and he's a very fine gentleman, so we should be very happy to have these gentlemen on the library board of trustees, and I would recommend that their reappointments be granted, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Councilor Freedom? Okay, all set. Councilor Dobrowski, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm in accord.
I was just thinking, let's poll Councilor Bonanza first, and then what we'll do is she'll come back in the voting round for the second member, okay?
Sure.
So this confirmation is for Councilor Bonanza. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote. Councilor Freedom?
Yea.
Thank you. Councilor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Feckley?
Yea.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
I should record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. Mr. Bonanza's been reappointed.
Thank you for your confidence.
We now move to that. Second member of trustees, and Councilor Bonanza will be joining this vote. Do you have a recommendation again?
I do, Mr. President. Library Board of Trustees, Lawrence El Nefor, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty, twenty-one, and I would be pleased to have him, be able to grant his reappointment, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Call the committee, Councilor Freedom?
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Thank you. Councilors, their recommendation read. Again, this will be a roll call vote. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, Councilor Freedom?
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Feckley?
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yea.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
I should record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. The appointment has taken place. We now move to the planning board. We have two members there, Patrick Perla, Fred Fredericks. Do you wish to take them in block?
I do, Mr. President, but I do have a question for you and then a comment.
Sure.
So at the last meeting, these were regular course, but I did ask if you could inquire of the mayor if he had any other reappointments that he wanted to bring before us.
Yep, I did.
I know he did bring William Connor before us, so that was, that made sense.
Right.
Because he was the only one on the assessors that hadn't been included. So on the planning board, we have John Sousa, whose appointment was up on April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Patrick Perla and Fred Fredericks are basically up to date. Their appointments just recently expired as of April fifteenth, eighteen. So my question is that I'm concerned that everybody else on the planning board would be reappointed and in line with being able to serve, you know, for another few years, and the chairman is not.
Correct.
So I don't know if we have the right to know that information of why his reappointment has not been sent down to us.
Okay. Yeah, nothing else has come down at this point, that's all I can say.
Okay.
All right, I can revisit that question again with him.
Okay, so I would like you to revisit that question.
Yeah, we'd like to.
And I would like to further time the planning board reappointments.
Further time them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I poll your committee?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the recommendation by the chair is further time. I'll yield the floor to the second member, Councilor Freedom.
I'll agree.
Further time? Okay, Councilor Dobrowski?
I'll go along with the chair.
Very good. Councilors, the recommendation read for further time on the planning board reappointments of Mr. Perla, Mr. Fredericks. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to one, further time has been granted. Thank you.
It was the one.
Councilor Bonanza? Okay, voted negative on that. All right, we now move on to old business. We have a second reading. Formerly Legal Affairs Petition thirty-one-eighteen, is the chairman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am ready to report. Second reading of an ordinance, amend chapter sixteen, section sixteen thirty-four of the revised ordinances entitled, "Classification of Positions by Deleting the Classification of S. nine for City Clerk and Inserting in Its Place the Classification of S. ten. Such Amendment to be Effective July first, two thousand and eighteen." My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor Freedom?
I agree.
Councilor Bonanza?
I'm in favor.
Please restate.
The recommendation, the unanimous recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, the recommendation to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, begin with Councilor Freedom?
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Feckley?
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yea.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
I should record a yea. The second reading of the ordinance on petition thirty-one-eighteen has been adopted.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm reading. Thanks to me. Oh, just get some water.
Okay, while Councilor Dobrowski's whetting his whistle.
Can we do them in?
Okay. I sent the, I had an email that I sent. We got in the police station in the athletic field in back of the high school. On the police station piece, they're waiting for a third appraisal, and the athletic field is dealing with some engineering process that they're going through. It's not there yet accordingly. We'll qualify that at a later date, but I know, I want, we're going to keep, I believe as the council president, we have to keep these things on the table. My daughter was playing in a softball tournament in nineteen ninety-nine, and I kept the newspaper because there was a little clipping about the game, and her name wasn't in there. I just happened to find the paper, and on the front page of the paper was, you know, the city council has agreed, has narrowed down the new police station to three sites. That was nineteen ninety-nine, you know. Councilor Freedom, how long have you been on that committee?
Twenty-seven years.
It's amazing, you know? It sickens me every time I drive by, you know, Mom and Pa Towns and see these brand-new police stations that are popping up all over the place, but I'm very pleased that I've been informed that there's some really good things happening potentially down in Boston to assist us. At the same time, soon as we get that last appraisal in, hopefully, we'll be able to move forward very quickly. So, you know, with that being said, and on another note, one of my biggest headaches right now, Ward Five, is the Doyle Field area. You know, the neighborhoods become overtaxed with parking every time there's an event down there because you can't use the field right now because there's a great renovation project taking place. You know, the same day that I was doing that, I went up to the high school, and I was walking through the mud to see if my grandson was up there practicing. So, I mean, it's time that we kind of step up a little bit. I'm glad, and I want to keep these hard to trot. You know, I know there's a lot of issues that the school department's dealing with and the mayor's office is dealing with, but let's face it, you know, that athletic complex, the past council qualified the grants. You know, we're ready to go with this. The authorization's taken place, so, you know, we'll continue to pursue it, and hopefully it will remain a priority with the mayor and the administration and also the school department as we move into the, into the spring. So with that being said, I really can't give you too much of a report on that at this point. Councilor? Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. I just want to make a comment on the engineering for the athletic fields. Both Councilor Bonanza and I, I think we've been to at least two sidewalks, and that's going on almost a year, I think. We were there last in November, maybe?
It was in the fall, though, I think it was a little earlier.
Okay, it was in the fall, and then before that, we were also traipsing through really cold, cold and awful landscape up there. But my point is, I want to say thank you to the council president for following up on that.
You're welcome.
I've inquired numerous times because neighbors called me. I'm sure that they still are in contact with Councilor Bonanza. They had some real issues, the people that abut that field, and the last conversation I think that Councilor Bonanza and I had with the mayor and Mr. Cleves was that they were going to address some of those things in the engineering. So the engineering's been ongoing for a while, so if you can just keep on that...
Absolutely. I pledge to you, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll let the, you know, obviously, the neighbors will call you, they'll call me, they'll call Mac.
Absolutely. Give my cellphone.
Yep.
Okay, we're all in this together, you know? I went to, my grandson played in Marlboro, the first game, on a very cold Monday afternoon, and my directions brought me to this incredible facility, and I sent a picture, I think, to Councilor Bonanza and also the mayor, and I was, I was beside myself when I found out that was the middle school, because the high school's doing theirs over right now, so they're all playing there. What a beautiful facility it was, and it was simple, and it was safe, and it was handicap accessible, and it was fun. You know, we need to do something like that. I mean, we've done a lot. Doyle Field is a charm, you know, there's no question about it, and it's going to just continue to be great, but we're talking about not only track and the other sports, we're talking about physical education here, too, you know? It's hard, it's hard for the school committee to be lobbying from their seat because they're looking at programming, they're looking at curriculum, they're looking at teachers, they're looking at, you know, keeping the operation going. That's their job, but as a city, I think it's our responsibility to step up and take care of the facilities. A lot of communities, DPW runs the whole thing, so you don't have to take, you don't have to close down a curriculum component in order to be able to take care of a capital improvement. So I'm looking forward to having continued discussion on that. Anything else on the old business? Councilor Freedom?
I just wanted to comment on this.
Please.
The update on the police station part, I agree with you on that athletic complex, too. I mean, my son's going to be forty, and we, every soccer game we went to everywhere was all the schools, were beautiful fields, and they were all at the schools, and they were great places for the kids to play. The police station update, I'd really like to move that quicker rather than, than later because, and I know we don't have much control, but we're being asked to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a piece of land on, off of Leggett Hill, and that's going to come up in the next meeting. So, you know, I can't support something like that before we have answers on the police station. I know that the state is, Senator Tran has put in an amendment for four point five million for the Lemmister Police Station, but that's, who knows where that'll go.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other open comments? Okay, and we'll now move on to new business. I'll yield the floor to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter thirteen, section thirteen seventy-seven of the revised ordinances entitled, "Stop Signs," to insert the following. Before I get into that, I need to make a motion to amend, to delete the very last reference, which is, which reads, "Samset Drive against southwestbound and northeastbound drivers at Candlewood Drive."
I'll make that motion. I brought that to the clerk's attention. That never got deleted. It gets sent in that way.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the...
Very last bullet.
The very last sentence.
Very last one. And we just need a second and vote on the motion.
Okay, we'll vote on that. So the, who made the motion?
Councilor Cormier.
Councilor Cormier made the motion, seconded by Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Are there any questions or comments on the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, it's been amended. So the last bullet, Samset Drive against southwestbound and northeastbound drivers at Candlewood Drive, has been deleted. Mr. Chairman, do you have a report?
I do. Again, first reading of an ordinance, amend chapter thirteen, section thirteen seventy-seven of the revised ordinances entitled, "Stop Signs," to insert the following. F. N. L. Road against southbound drivers at North Street. Atlantic Avenue against northbound drivers at North Street. Primrose Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Lake Street against northbound drivers at North Street. Woodsum Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Morningside Street against northbound drivers at North Street. Sergeant Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Cullen Avenue against northbound drivers at North Street. Stewart Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. McKinley Street against northbound drivers at North Street. Amy Avenue against northbound drivers at North Street. Westminster Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Hobson Street against northbound drivers at North Street. Greenwich Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Schley Street against northbound drivers at North Street. Elmwood Avenue against southbound drivers at North Street. Beth Avenue against northbound drivers at Debbie Drive. Albert Drive, southwestbound drivers at Central Street. Albert Drive, heading northwestbound onto Central Street. And further amending by deleting the following. Tonzio Road against eastbound and westbound drivers at Aspenwall Avenue. Graham Street against east and westbound drivers at Central Street. Litchfield Street against southwestbound drivers at Central Street. Willard Street against northeastbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Visco Lloyd Avenue against southbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Whitney Street against northeast and southwestbound drivers at Mechanic Street. Whitney Street against northeast and southwestbound drivers at Water Street. Lindell Avenue against eastbound and westbound drivers at Merriam Avenue. Washington Street against northeast and southeastbound drivers at Merriam Avenue. Bel Air Heights against eastbound drivers at Old Mill Road. Aspenwall Avenue against northbound drivers at Malburn Street. Johnson Street, northwestbound entering Visco Lloyd Avenue. Johnson Street, southwestbound entering Visco Lloyd Avenue. Day Street against southwestbound drivers at Main Street. North Street against east and westbound drivers at Main Street. Mill Street against westbound drivers at Hawes Street. Mill Street against westbound drivers entering Hawes Street. Park Street against southbound drivers at Monument Square. River Street against northwestbound drivers at Hamilton Street. River Street against southeastbound drivers at Main Street. Nichols Street against northbound drivers at North Main Street. Lindell Avenue against eastbound drivers at North Main Street. Cross Street against westbound drivers at Central Street. And further amending by inserting the following. Bainbridge Street against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street. Graham Street against westbound drivers at Union Street. Gamache Lane against southbound drivers at Grant Street. De Chico Drive against northbound drivers at Union Street. Grant Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Research Drive against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Emerson Lane against northbound drivers at Holland Woods Road. Holland Woods Road against westbound drivers at Pleasant Street. Walden Court against northbound drivers at Holland Woods Road. Tonzio Road against northeastbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Tonzio Road against eastbound drivers at Malburn Street. Bel Air Heights against westbound drivers at Leggett Hill Road. Samset Drive against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street. Spindletop Drive against southwestbound drivers at Samset Drive. Ballard Court against northwestbound drivers at Samset Drive. Neeland Circle against southeastbound drivers at Samset Drive. Candlewood Drive against northwestbound drivers at Neeland Circle. Candlewood Drive against eastbound drivers at Willard Street. Samset Drive against northeastbound drivers at Candlewood Drive. This is at the intersection closest to Willard Street. Candlewood Drive against southeastbound and northwestbound drivers at Samset Drive. The, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and we need to schedule a hearing on the second, oh, no, we don't need to schedule, oh, yes, we do.
Yeah.
We need to schedule a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for May fourteenth, We need to schedule a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for May 14, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Can I yield your committee? Council Frida? Council Badanza?
Counsel, could you read that again, please? I think I missed a couple.
I was going to amend it at the end.
All right, Councilor, their recommendation read to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council...
I just want to thank Dr. Fontaine.
Mr. God, huh? Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been granted, and we have a hearing on 5/14/18 at six, excuse me, 5/14/18 at 6 o'clock in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report on the next hearing?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me, ordinance.
First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic by inserting a new section 1368 dot one, bicycle lanes as follows. In accordance with the provisions of chapter 89, section 9 of the general laws of Massachusetts, the following streets are designated for marked bicycle lanes. North Street, South Side, from Lunenburg Town Line to 100 feet west of Main Street and North Street. North Side, from 100 feet west of Main Street to Lunenburg Town Line. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on May 14, 2018, at 6:10 PM for the second hearing.
Thank you. Council Frida? Council Badanza?
I'm fine.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant the first reading of the ordinance are adopted. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Council Frida?
I think, again, we need to remind the public that this isn't our idea. It's part of the DOT project on North Street, something that we needed to do. So, they're bicycle lanes.
Right. We don't design them. They dictate them, correct?
Right. The last, the first time it was on, somebody called me and said, "Why are you spending money on bicycle lanes?"
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. We now have a first reading of an ordinance. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 13, section 13 dash 66 dot 6 of the revised ordinances entitled Senior Citizen Parking by Rescinding Section 13 dash 66 dot 6 in its entirety. Recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing on the second reading for May 29, 2018, at 6:45 PM.
Thank you. Council Frida? Council Badanza? Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council Dubrowski?
Yeah, I just, I just think we should commend Council Cormier for this one, as well as, even though I hated to read it, the, the long one. I know it was a lot of work, and I do think that should be recognized.
He's single still.
Yeah. A few other commitments now, though.
I know, I know, you know, I'm just teasing. Nice job. Great job. Thank you. This will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. We now move on to the next reading before the council. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 13, section 13 dash 88 of the revised ordinances entitled Left Turn Prohibition by inserting Albert Drive, northwestbound to Central Street, southbound. Again, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on the second reading for May 29, 2018, at 6:50 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Frida? Council Badanza?
I'm good.
Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments? Council David Cormier?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what Council Dubrowski said on the last one, there's also a lot more cleanup to do. So, I'm just going to warn before, you know, budget season that the mayor might want to look at expenses for the city council because I think she warned me to hold off till after July 1st to do any more because the budget's running low. But anyway, I'll do some more cleanup next year on some things.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 13, section 1379, Yield Signs by inserting Litchfield Street. Facing drivers on the exit to Litchfield Street from Central Street northbound and Litchfield Street facing drivers exiting Litchfield Street heading southbound on Central Street. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing on the second reading for May 29, 2018, at 6:55 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Badanza?
Yes.
Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been adopted, and again, we have a hearing coming up on 5/29 at 6:55 PM. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, move to page nine. We have a first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of the ordinance, amend chapter 13, section 1340 of the revised ordinances entitled One-Hour Parking Between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM by deleting in its entirety Central Street, Westerly Side, beginning at a point 120 feet south of Union Street, southerly for a distance of 205 feet. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on the second reading for May 29, 2018, at 7 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Badanza?
Yes.
Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been adopted. The hearing to be continued is established on 5/29 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, are you ready for the next report?
I am. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 14, section 1421 of the revised ordinances entitled Ingestion of Medical Marijuana on Public Property by deleting the current text in its entirety and inserting in its place a new section 14 dash 21 entitled Consumption of Marijuana on Tetrahydrocannabinol.
Good.
TTH.
THC.
THC, there we go. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing on the second reading for May 29, 2018, at 7:10 PM in the chambers.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Council Frida?
Yay.
Excuse me? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Council Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. By a vote of nine to nothing, the first reading of the ordinance has been adopted with the hearing scheduled for 5/29 at 7:10 PM in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, you have one more before us.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter 13, section 1377, entitled Stop Signs by inserting King Avenue against westbound drivers at Stewart Avenue. Our recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for May 29, 2018, at 7:05 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Badanza?
Yes.
Thank you. This will be a roll call. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida, Council Dubrowski, Council Shalfo Zephyr, Council Feckley, Council Badanza, Council Ottinger, Council Pauline Cormier, Council David Cormier. I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of that ordinance has been granted. Mr. Chairman, great work.
Thank you.
Great work. I'm going to do a couple of things on the, are there any other items on the new business? Go ahead, Council Feckley.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to announce that we have set up subcommittee meetings for the interviews for the city clerk position. We have three meetings, April 30th at 5 o'clock, May 2nd at 4 o'clock, and May 3rd at 5 o'clock. So, we'll be opening up all of those meetings with the review of the process, then discussion, and then the Ways and Means Subcommittee will be entering into executive session to interview the candidates. So, we're hoping that we will get some successful candidates to bring before you. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council is May 14, and I know we have a very, very busy calendar for that evening, so we may need to schedule a special meeting, but we'll know more after the last round of interviews on May 3rd.
Can you share with the council how many finalists you have in selecting your top three?
We have seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the work. It's a big job.
Also, if I may, Mr. President, I'm just curious, how many total applied? Do we know that? I'm just curious.
It was 39.
Forty-nine.
No, it is 49.
Forty-nine. I was going to say 49. Yeah, no, that's right. That was so...
Nineteen for this one.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
It was, it was a strong field, very strong field. We were very pleased.
Okay.
I can, I can share that with you.
Right. Our assistant clerk will be joining us on the 21st of May as a professional courtesy to the town of Gardner. In order to take care of some of their personnel matters and things, she's doing some coverage there, so she'll be transitioning over here. We'll see her Thursday night at the Tri-City Council meeting. So, we did a favor for the clerk, so he won't be throwing any tomatoes at us or anything across the table.
We hope so.
Just a little tiny one, that's all. Any other items on the new business? Okay, community calendar, I want to, I know some of the councils here participated in the Miles for Mary Beth this past Saturday. What a great tribute. You know, what a beautiful person. And it's so unfortunate that, you know, these things happen, but they were, there had to be close to 1,000 people who attended, everywhere from, you know, the neighborhood where she lives, to her students, to students of past, faculty, administration, people who just work in the system. A beautiful person, Mary Beth Bro, who is battling cancer right now, and the community came out for her. I just want to congratulate all the people who organized it. There were a lot of family members, friends and colleagues, and even students, too, that got involved with that. So, kudos to them, and we continue to pray for her, her health. We also have a very sad situation that took place here in town. On Friday, May 18, from 7 to 11 PM, there's going to be a benefit at the Eagles. Ray Richard's going to be DJing it. There's raffle, silent auction, 50/50. There's actually a GoFundMe page that was just established for John Reberge. John Reberge, again, is battling cancer. He's pretty sick, and again, we reach out to him and Pauline and the, and the family with our thoughts and prayers. So, the first, that one's going to be on, again, May 18, 7 to 11 PM. It's open to the public. They're looking for silent raffle items. I'm going to have a stack of tickets by noon time tomorrow. If you'd like to help get them out, please, please help. Again, it's the GoFundMe page, and people can contribute, contribute to that. On Saturday, May 12, just backing up a little bit, this event will be taking place at the Eagles as well, and it's potty with a purpose, and that's in conjunction with the annual Michael's Run. Michael Wallace, who's part of my extended family, all the proceeds from that get-together go to help mental health. The money's donated in different areas at the discretion of the family. It's a great cause, and again, that's for Michael, Mikey Wallace, number 22, Lummister Blue Devil graduate from Harvard that's been missing for a very long time. Just, Council Shalfo Zephyr wanted to connect with me regarding openings this weekend, so just to requalify that, on the 28th of Saturday, the National Little League Grand Opening is at 11:00 AM sharp. You're all invited to attend, and at 12:00 PM, we have to hustle up to the Lassie League. So, if one's running late, if you can cover for the ones that aren't there down at the other one, we appreciate it. Haven't heard on 12th Street yet, or the Lummister. Is the Lummister happening pretty soon?
Yeah, North Lummister Little League is next Saturday as well, starting at 10 o'clock. They're going to be, yeah, they're going to be having a parade for, you know, the little ones. And they're also going to be having a dedication to the memorial engraving for Pat Harrington, one of our coaches who passed away.
Fantastic.
Last year, so...
Yeah, give our best if we can, if we can.
Yeah, so I'm going to be there at 10 o'clock. I'm going to be presenting, so...
Thank you. Anything else? Any other items? Go ahead.
I believe the 12th Street Little League opening day is going to be May 5. I don't have a time on that yet, but I will follow up on that.
Okay, perfect.
And just a FYI to Ward Two and anybody that travels Mechanic Street, I got an email that 222 Mechanic is coming down starting Wednesday morning, 7:00 AM.
Great.
So, I'm assuming at least a portion, if not all, of Mechanic is going to be detoured around that area. So, anybody that travels Mechanic Street starting Wednesday morning, you're probably going to want to find an alternate route or give yourself some, some extra time.
Well, sometime they were going to do a little cut-through Bobo's Market there. He wasn't too upset about that. Okay, anything else? All right, yes?
So, I just want to mention for residents of North Lummister and anybody else that's traveling in and out, they are starting utility work that will be, you know, the pre, the prequel to the work that they'll be doing at Prospect and Hamilton and Mechanic and River Street. They have already started that, but it's in the evening, so it's late. I think it doesn't start until about 9 o'clock until 5:00 AM, so it might even be a little bit later than that. So, hopefully it will, you know, minimally impact people traveling in and out. But I think North Lummister is going to be in for the long haul with all of this work, so...
Do any of us remember when families only had one car? It's just unbelievable now, the traffic. You know, just the numbers are crazy, crazy. And you can tell, you can tell by the condition of the roads right now, they're in tough shape after this winter, for sure. DPW's working hard. Okay, do I have a motion adjourned? Seconded? Thank you. Have a nice evening. Great job, everyone. What's that? Last week's 12th.
The Lummister City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company. 345 R Lancaster Street, Lummister.